Can I ask you, do you know the restaurant that you're in?
Wait, Mr. Lewis Early, please stand. I'm just going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to let down its local citizens who have contributed to the community and are now reaching a significant milestone in their life. And whereas the city of Long Beach does desire to congratulate Lou Early in celebration of his 100th birthday on January 11th, November 20th. Mr. Early is a longtime Long Beach resident and a graduate of Long Beach High School, class of 1938. Officially, he served on the Long Beach Light Food Control from 1938 to 1941. He owns several businesses, including the Rockport Shoes and Castro Convertible, which is a furniture company, as well as taught a class at Harvard University. He is also actively involved in the Long Beach Senior Center. Now, therefore, as his life is celebrated by many friends in the community, the City Council and the City Manager of the city of Long Beach present this certificate of recognition and wish continued health, longevity, and happiness to Lou Early.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Governor Walcott, Secretary of State Malory. President, Councilmember Mandel is absent. Councilmember Treisman.
Here.
Vice President McKinnis.
Here.
President Meddo.
Present.
With the recognition of the presence of Acting City Manager John Morando and Acting Corporation Council, Greg Kalminsky, and Abby Sillings to the flag.
Counting three. I'll be on, thank you, President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, good evening, and welcome to our second meeting of the year. We'll begin with our city manager update.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for participating yesterday in the City Council MLK, a member of Washington, a member of Congress, and celebrating at the MLK dinner. Dr. King was a great man, taught us so much. One of my favorite sayings of his is, "We may have all come on different ships, but we're all in the same boat now." On Saturday, the city had a snow event from about 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The Iowa Department Assault Team was called in with 13 employees using 13 vehicles. Additionally, two mechanics were called in from the central office to handle any maintenance issues during a snow event. Deputy City Manager Greg Scott was in contact with Detective William Scott-chems for the beginning to attend to this kind of snow event. As part of the city's effort to support our residents' housing needs and desires to remain in Long Beach, the city is hosting a first-time homeowner and financial education workshop on Thursday, January 30th, in this room from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. This event will provide an opportunity for folks to discuss tools and financial incentives to purchase or rehab a home, condo, or power outlet. While it's only January, the city has begun accepting applications for its paid summer internship program. Through hands-on learning, students will have an opportunity to attend workshops, enhance their knowledge of government, and explore career avenues. To apply, please send your resume application to intern placement preference to lbinternship@longbeachny.gov. No later than Friday, May 8th. To download the application, visit the city's website. The city's annual four-mile snowflake race will be held on Saturday, February 1st. Registration begins at 6:30 a.m. at Long Beach Capital Regional School in the gymnasium. The race begins at 9:00 a.m. Please call 431-3890 for more information. The Long Beach Pole Bears will make their annual plunge on Sunday, February 2nd, on Riverside Boulevard, a beach with proceeds benefiting Make-A-Wish. Shirt sales begin at 10 a.m. Pole Bears gather at 12:30 p.m. and go in the water at 1:30 p.m. Visit www.longbeachpolebears.gov for more information. And finally, I'd like to thank Daction Corporation Council, Greg Kalminsky, for the great service to the city. For those on the way, it's going to be his last meeting before he begins his new position in the city in plain quote. He's done a tremendous job here in Long Beach, and he will be missed. And personally, Greg, I'd like to thank you for helping me with five legal issues the last several months, which have been, you know, interesting for me, finding new positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and an honor serving in Long Town.
And also, just going to give a short city council update. Councilman Mandel asked me to pass along that he's absent tonight to mandatory work travel. He was sent away for training. So we have a short knock it, but let's say I want to just give you an update on what the city council's done and is working on. So first off, as many of you know, we passed a resolution agreeing to a limited waging of return planning privilege with the Nassau County DA's office. This will allow the DA access to advice previous councils and management were given regarding the payout scandal. They've been asking for this for a while, and in the interest of transparency, the council agreed to give it to them, and we all want to get to the bottom of this. Along the same lines, the council has expanded the scope of work being done by Ingerman Smith, the law firm that was hired late last year to correct the city's response to the state comptroller's audit. Ingerman is currently in the midst of conducting an internal audit of the payout scandal on behalf of the city, something that probably should have been done a year ago, but we're doing it now, and researching our options for clawing back payments that violate the city code or union contracts. In addition, they're also working with the council on some potential code and charter amendments that balance out some of the power issues that have been going on between the council and the staff. And they're also helping us with getting some of the committees, we've been talking about the citizen committees and boards, re-energized. The problem is, our charter really hasn't been going through a comprehensive review in, quite frankly, decades. So that's something we're starting to take a look at, to bring it up to basically the 21st century. Last week, we held our first public working meeting. This is going to be a regular thing for the city for the first time in, quite frankly, probably ever. As would all things do, there was some kinks to work out and plenty of questions to answer, but we're committed to doing things right and think this meeting was a good first step. Lastly, we've been fortunate to engage a West End homeowner named Peter Madonia as a pro bono advisor to the council. Mr. Madonia has held numerous senior-level positions in New York City government, including as the first deputy commissioner of the New York City Fire Department, as well as he was the chief of staff to Mayor Michael Bloomberg. He's also the former chief operating officer of the Rockefeller Foundation. The gentleman is an encyclopedia of city government. He's agreed to work with us on strategies and best practices and policies aimed at turning both the city's finances and management procedures around. So we're fortunate to have him, and he will be helping us going forward. The council would also like to echo what the acting city manager said, that we wish Mr. Kalminsky good luck in his future endeavors, and that can first surface to Long Beach. And then, finally, you know, folks, we're 21 days into our term. We know expectations are high, and that folks are eager to see transformation. We're with you, and we look forward to working with you all to meet those expectations. That said, this is going to be a lengthy process. There's a lot to fix. We've got a lot of balls in the air right now, and we're dotting i's and crossing t's to make sure that what we're doing is being done the right way. We can't just make changes for the sake of making changes. We have to enact well-researched, smart, and legal changes that will get our city on a path towards real sustainability, and basically, that's what we're committed to doing. So thank you, and with that, let's move on to the agenda.
Okay. Our first testimony today is a resolution revising and adopting the city of Long Beach Transportation Department Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy Manual.
Okay. Any questions from the council members?
I have a question. Regarding the word accident, can we change that to the word crash?
I spoke to the transportation coordinator, Brendan and Cassell, and part of the reason for calling it accident is because this also doesn't include just motor vehicle crashes. It includes an accident where a bus, where maybe the bus driver makes a tight turn and the passenger of the bus falls over, gets hurt, so that's an accident. So accident kind of covers several areas.
Any more questions? Any questions from the public? Ms. Planchett.
I wasn't having a speech tonight, but I'm sorry, but thank you for asking how it looks. The word accident is very wrong here. These are crashes, not accidents. When you say accident, an accident is an ice cream fallen off of a cone. An accident is like accidentally tripping or something. A person getting behind a wheel, commandeering a five-ton big metal box, and making a decision to drink, or take drugs, or behave in a manner that goes against the contract they signed when they signed up for a license, that's not an accident. And when you use the word accident, you're absolving them. You're saying, oh, just an accident. Your words matter, and if we're going to move the needle on traffic safety, it has to start with our language, and it has to be holding negligent behavior accountable. So I understand what you mean, no offense, President, but you're not an authority on this by any sense of the manner. You are not. It is inappropriate to be using the word accident. We've got 13 state agencies that have removed the word accident from their language. The DMV has been working on removing the word accident from accident reports, and it really just, it's so deeply offensive to a person who's a survivor and whose mother is a crash victim. And every day I work with crash victims. These are not accident victims. So I'm sorry, this just really gets to me. And then, the other question I have is, why are you voting on this? This is an annual compliance. This is actually a precondition to receiving federal grants. I don't recall this ever being on a council agenda. So why is this being voted on?
It's been on council agendas in the past, though admittedly, for not the last several years, and the city recently underwent its triennial review with the FTA, and one of the issues the FTA identified is that the governing body should be improving of the policies, so that's why it's here tonight.
Oh, that's right. And I did go through it. I spent some time going through the one that was put up on the website. I didn't see what any, the only updates that I know of from the FDA in the past year were random drug testings were increased from 25% to 50%. I'm not sure, is that what you amended? Are there any other amendments to the drug policy that you're seeing on? Okay. And also, another thing that I had recommended is, I see under FTA policy, these are volunteer under, I think it was section 28?
You don't have that.
Okay, but it should be, probably it should be in there because there are volunteers, and that is part of, that is actually a recommendation from the FTA. Brendan, can you please? I know that you don't. Can you please come up with specific volunteers? But if you have someone who actually works in the, I would amend. Please, thank you.
Currently, the city, we don't have any volunteers for work throughout the city at all. In terms of driving the bus. In terms of driving the bus, taking the buses, that can, any city assets. It isn't...
Wait, when you ask the question, can you step in front of the microphone so we can hear you?
And then also with the accident portion, wording was approved by FTA, and that's the word I want to go with, but also if we require, an example would be in California where there was a bus fire, and that would be a freight shield, so accident cover that aspect as well.
I'd like, microphone, please. I'd like to recommend that you amend this, not only the agenda item, but that you amend the policy to include crash or accidents, so that you're covering all your bases, because we really need to move the needle here. We need to stop calling these things accidents, because if somebody is getting into a crash, and it is their doing, calling it an accident is, it really flies in the face of everything that I work for.
I have no issue with asking the FTA if it would allow us to include crash and accident in that section, but it will be up to the FTA.
I mean, you're the direct contact person for that, because a U.S.D.O.T. would like to follow us.
We have to get it approved.
Okay. You don't, you don't need the FTA to ask for permission. Cities and municipalities have actually adopted using the word crash on accidents.
We need their approval on this whole policy, so if it has to be, yes.
Okay, I can actually get you to contact person for that. Thank you.
Any other comments for the public?
Senator Malick, I don't want this resolution revising and adopting the city of Long Beach Transportation Department Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy Manual.
Hi, welcome. Hi.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Hi. Always remember the word.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, folks, they made their way back up here. We'll be doing some good work here. I hope kids will familiar you, but if you get three minutes, make your remarks.
And while we're explaining, I just want to apologize that I'm wearing my coat. It's really cold up here, so. So for those that's home that are commenting on my yellow jacket, that is mine. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Ron Bagany. Ron Bagany, Long Beach. Before I just start, I just want to make it perfectly clear that I wish you success, and you do very well. You are the last shot for this city. But, and I love you all, let me read what I wrote. And it's not sour grapes that I lost. I think it could have been a blessing, and I think might help me. Besides that, let me go with this thing. Be silent, and using the words "trust me," you should know by now it doesn't work in politics. You, the council, forced me to question your honesty and loyalty to the people of Long Beach. I'm just going to read stuff that we said during the campaign. I'm reiterating a lot of stuff here. For the first month of this year, this management is still on the menu for the taxpayer to swallow of this new administration. Why did this administration come to work totally unprepared, without their own team, to take over the city and give it back to the people? With the foiling of records and investigations in just the past year, this administration and the people of Long Beach know where who are bleeding the city of untold revenue. Every day, we are wasting thousands of dollars. No-show jobs, duplication of service, incompetent and wasteful supervisors, falsifying city records, overtime out of control, and still giving some special, and I mean special, employees 100% of their vacation time. It's still the norm of Long Beach. This administration, in a short time, must recoup at least $3 million of these pirates who have shown nothing but contempt for their employment. If this administration doesn't recoup these millions of dollars, our taxes will be another 8% or higher. By not being prepared with the new city manager, with day one, and keeping the insubordinate acting city manager, John Morando, we are doomed. He keeps his cronies close to him. You might not know that, but he does, especially Mr. Robinson and Mr. Teg. I had asked Mr. Morando at a city council meeting to investigate the service regular and the 13 sanitation truck that turned to junk. Guess what happened? Nothing, of course. Do you know why? Because all along, since he was hired as Commissioner of Public Works, he always saw the Department of Sanitation. And for a short time, he always saw the city garage. How can he investigate himself? Now that he is the boss of the whole city, he can fix the problem. Instead, he is the problem. Yeah, one second. If this administration keeps him, you will be the problem if you stay on this path. And again, I'm here to help you when things change. I love you all. Bye now. Mary Bolosatch.
I didn't know about this, but I can't stick up for you. We should talk about that. Well, if I don't know about it, I can't stick up for you.
Hello.
Hi.
Mary Bolosatch. Great, I wish you luck. I've known you since you were in three days with my son. I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, Mary.
And you always help us to ask civic on the air questions.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm talking as Mary. I would like to commend you for having your workshop. I didn't know anything about it. I would like to say, I think it's great that you're working on the charter, should have been done decades ago, probably, but I think your priority should be the city manager position and your corporation council, and get those steps in a row. While you're still getting advised on the charter, these things need to be done. It's two years. It's two years where we're just kind of floating along, and it's getting a little tiring. You mentioned the searches, we're talking about searches, and I'd like to know who does the interviews on the searches, like the board council and city managers?
We've interviewed two people so far for Corporation Council. We have three interviews set up tomorrow. We have a committee, available with myself, the agent, page department, as Commissioner of Police, Commissioner of Building, Deputy Commissioner for Public Works, Civil Service Supervisor, and one of our attorneys, an intern in the focus.
Okay. And I will be sitting here. I was just going to ask, why isn't council represented in this? I don't know if it's been done that way before, but I find that...
Well, presently, it's the city managers appointees to make, and I have all intentions of when we come up with the right candidate, to present that candidate to the council with a final approval.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Morando, but I find it, like when, right now, we've got all these things up in the air and all these issues. I find it very strange that some of those people are voting on including to choose, you know, these people. My opinion, my thought, my feeling, and some others also. You mentioned committees. When will you be hosting those, the people who want to, you know, participate in these committees? Like, my husband worked with section eight, has an authority, would be a good thing to keep him busy, not having to retire. So, you know, there are a lot of people that want to be involved, and I think you need to make it more public when you're doing these things. And I would appreciate if you could let us know, what committee, ethic committee, you have the Housing Authority, I'm sure, you know, half the others, and if not whole. And I think you both need to know and be involved.
Mary, you bring up very valid points, and in order to make informed decisions and to ensure that we have all the information we need in order to put something up to the public, the council has to make certain requests of the acting city manager, and that includes understanding the roles and responsibilities of the commissions and the boards, and making sure that they are not in conflict with anything else in the charter or the code of ordinances. From there, we will work together to put them out to the public in a cohesive, professional manner. Our timeline is, of course, accelerated. It should have been done yesterday, but we're working as fast as we can. So thank you for your comments. They're duly open, and we are addressing them.
Ms. Bolosatch, Mary, we have been working on a format which will be web-based. I have it here. It's a draft form. We have another version here. We're trying to make it very simple for people to decide if they want to apply for any position, that it will be received by all...
for any position, that it will be received by all parties necessary to review it. In the charter and on the council, there are certain items where the city manager points, and the council has represented, and things like that. We have, I don't think we're finished reviewing it, but I know we have reviewed it. And we should be finished, hopefully, with one part of that soon. I don't have the exact data. I'm working with City Clerk. David Fregge has been very busy with a lot of different things. With that room behind us, setting up that first teleconference meeting, and a lot of other things.
It's more that the council owes the city manager and the city clerk information in order so that we can proceed. There's no holdup of the city administration with the council at the present time.
Are there any guidelines that were in place before for any of these commissions?
That's a very pertinent question, and that's what we're trying to find out.
Okay.
John McGraw.
John McGraw, 236 West Bay Drive. Before I start, I want to offer very good luck and congratulate you on your task ahead, and how difficult it is to sit through the welfare.
You finally do much job.
This is concerning the proposal arena from working the event. My main concern regarding Sunset Bay Adventures' proposal has to do with the impact on both the Long Beach Recreation Area and upon the residents who live around it. Sunset Adventures made a presentation before the former city council, which was not public, and subsequently, an RFP was ordered to be prepared. The original RFP was, in my opinion, tail and made. By that, I mean all of the points, locations, and proposals made by Sunset's presentation in that meeting seemed to be incorporated in this RFP, and it's now in the scope to attract only one vendor. I do not have, yet it was put on hold by the previous administration for over three years. This wasn't just an oversight. I do not have any new proposal pricing given to the council, but I do have the old one, which calls for 15 years, with the first five at $2,500 per year, the second at $5,000 per year, and the third five years at $7,500 per year. The going rate for docking in municipal marinas run in the range of $120 per foot per season. For example, a 25-foot boat at, let's say, $3,000 per season, multiplied by 26 slips equals $78,000. This is $3,000 more than the entire 15-year proposed contract. By the way, I paid a $12,000 gate fee for my access on top of almost $20,000 per year in property taxes, which they will not be paying. They also stated that they will give the city four slips for emergency craft. That's not core savings, but duplication of services, as we have the Nassau County PD and the Coast Guard controls. Sunset Adventures states that the docks will reach out only 70 feet. This is just not true according to their own drawings. Plans call for a 30-foot platform, 22-foot gangway, 24-foot landing boat, and a 10-foot wide by 300-long floating dock with mooring assemblies that also have 4x16-foot fingers extending outward for a total of 104 feet, which is equal to or greater than the length of the current municipal pier. When questioned regarding legal liability, they state that the city would be indemnified with additional insurance rider. We all know that a good attorney who has a client injured on city property due to some sort of accident or negligence, they will figure out a way to find the city liable. Busiest time in the recreation area is the summer. The recreation department uses the playground and bathrooms in that chaos for summer camp. The basketball courts, ball fields, roller hockey rink, and skate park are used day and night. The parking lot is very active, as is the recreation center itself. As Sunset Adventures' destinations seem to be establishments that serve alcohol along with the cruises, the main impetus for the use of these taxis would be to conclude driving. That can only mean that the majority of the clients are consuming alcohol if they possibly be impaired. Are we willing to take the chance of a pedestrian or cyclist, maybe a child, being hurt in an accident that stems from one of these cruises? And we'll finish up right now. This is our developed waterfront, front of our playground, our parking location, and our chaos. And that's why they want it. They're pushing for it because it is already developed, and we should be getting the right return on it without giving up the infrastructure that's already in place for impacting children's safe places. Thank you very much.
John, is that all the same information as an email you sent us?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
To follow up on that, John, your email is forwarded to the acting city manager and his staff. We've asked them, as we mentioned before, as I mentioned in the email, that we've asked for a comprehensive analysis of this so that we make sure that we take all factors into consideration before moving forward.
Okay, I think my email was more detailed than what I said.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knows you follow up.
Ailee Heschin.
Ailee Heschin, Long Beach. I missed your first meeting, so I'll say congratulations to everybody up there. I am wondering if you have hired a search firm yet for the city manager position? I know Mary talked about the corporation council, but city manager?
We are working with someone.
Okay, and who is doing the interviewing of anybody that's there?
Or city council members.
City council members, oh, yeah, good.
As well as our pro bono advisor, Peter Madonia, former chief of staff of Mayor Bloomberg.
I'd like to thank him for stepping up, too. Thank you. Okay, next, work sessions. I did listen to it. Thank you to the commanding officers for putting it on tape, but it's very difficult to hear at home. So could you announce when they come up? I guess it was in the journal or something, but I didn't see it.
We thought about the working.
The work.
Yeah, the second, same clock, second Thursday each month. So it's a week between the council meetings on Thursday.
Now we know. Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay.
And they're going to be posted?
It was posted in three spots, website. Under longbeachmy.com/councilmeetings, where your agendas are.
I guess you have to call me at home. I'm sorry, I missed it. Now I know.
There's a box there that tells you the next, all the upcoming councils, the next meeting and the next work session is in that box. Plus, it was in the county of Adventure from the front page of the website. And I also put it in the news in the city. So it was right on Saturday on the website.
We will be talking to our PR department to make sure this information is more widely circulated.
Thank you. It sounds like it was well circulated. I missed it. Next, several booths were removed from the boardwalk because of graffiti that included an obscenity and a swastika. I believe the swastika would constitute a hate crime. The work was signed by the graffiti artist, who has damaged many other places throughout our town, and many, many people know this young man. In West Seneca, New York, a 17-year-old drew a swastika, and this is what happened to him. He was charged with fourth-degree criminal mischief as a hate crime, first-degree aggravated harassment for placing a swastika on a property. Both of those are felonies. He also was charged with misdemeanor charges of criminal tampering and making graffiti. Two felonies. Was anything done to find who destroyed a Long Beach property? Okay. If we are going to charge him with a crime or fine him for the damages, perhaps the police could at least stop by his house and suggest he put his paint cans away? You're saying I should go to the police department with it?
No. Try to see the question in the text here.
Oh, I see. Okay, next, Harris Beach. Actually, Dave, I have a piece of paper to hand out if you would. Harris Beach, Norway. I sent out a press release about rezoning the hospital campus, including residential properties. They accomplish this through the doctrine merger, which is defined as the absorption of a lesser estate by a greater estate. I think our zoning board made a mistake by letting them get away with this in the first place. I know you are not the zoning board, but you are our city council, and I think this is a problem for our city. Absorption of a lesser estate by a greater estate. Residents living behind Stop &amp; Shop could be absorbed by the greater estate next door. Harris Beach says invoking this doctrine to secure the ruling represents an effective and impactful strategy in New York State. Again, big business wins over little guy. The East State Street group unsuccessfully tried to get this ruling overturned. The owners of property near the hospital will suffer for this. That useless medical pavilion will be built, overshadowing their homes and keeping them from ever being sold. All the group is asking for is that that pavilion be pushed back away from their properties. The city has done nothing to help them so far. I know that their lawyer is going to continue pushing for something to happen, and I hope that you'll help them with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Norwegians.
Hi, Norwegians. Just a few things, if you could clarify for me. I believe Mr. Kalbinski even had notice two weeks ago, and around January 7, and that he was sworn in in Glencoe on the 14th, and he starts there tomorrow. So I'm wondering why was he allowed to stay in Long Beach for the past week?
Unhappy with that question.
I know, I'm not finished yet. Just let me run through it. Who do we have stepping into his place tomorrow? I understand his interview is going on right now. Who also takes his place on the zoning board, as the lawyer of the zoning board? And then, with regards to the city manager position, it's actually not advertised that the position is even open on the city website, and there's nothing that says that you guys are working with anybody. With regards to the work these meetings, the meeting last week, both Liz and Karen addressed certain committees that they were just going to let them slide, as is, I would suggest that every committee, commission, board would be looked through, and every person, anybody who wants to maybe apply for a position on a board should be given the opportunity to apply. I'm not saying that the commissions or boards that are working right now are not doing a great job, but anybody who wants to should be given a chance to start. Thank you. So go ahead, I'm trying to do this.
The swearing in at Glencoe was a nice gesture that the mayor and the city council were trying to do for me. Ceremonial in nature. I didn't sign the overcard that night, and I did it for the exact reason I was saying. So I have not switched jobs yet. I gave notice. You know, if the council asked me to leave earlier or said my services weren't needed, I would have left. But I wanted to try my best to ensure that there's some sort of a transition in my office, so I gave the standard two weeks' notice, which my future employer accepted.
Okay. Oh, I actually just have one more question regarding that. Are we going to hold off Mr. Kalbinski's payout until after the investigation is finished? I know it's a personal matter, so I'm probably sure you won't come to answer, but I just wanted to put it out there. The same way Mr. Kalbinski didn't get a payout until after the investigation, correct?
Well, he hasn't, but that's a different circumstance because he had a contract that was questionable whether that was legitimate. But if Mr. Kalbinski is paid in accordance with what's allowed by the Code of Ordinances, which is proper, there wouldn't be a reason to hold him off.
But that's part of the thing. We don't know if the Code of Ordinance is proper.
What's that?
We don't know if the Code of Ordinance is proper, right?
No, it's clearly defined that the Code of Ordinance is what they're allowed to cash out on termination, the termination of employment of the city. It's 50 vacation days and 30% of the safe time and such.
And since I've been acting city manager, anybody that's left other than Mr. Kalbinski because of the contract dispute has been paid out either by what's allowed in the contract or what's allowed in the code. No more, no less. And if you did ask, then I'll believe that for work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If I can, the procedures, just to be, that I understand it, and that I can explain it, that's all.
Yeah, the council's getting, if anybody leaves, the council's getting that payout sheet at least 72 hours before any payout is made, so we can review it.
Okay, so seeing he's leaving, technically, this is over Sunday for you? Or is this part of your job?
Technically, my resignation is effective at 5:00 p.m., but I volunteered to be here tonight.
So it's 7:00 to 8:00 hours. Do you have this app yet now, or when do you get it?
We won't be able to calculate it till after the next payroll. The latest payroll started on January 16, and will end next Wednesday.
So to address your comments on the committee, I said skip by on the environmental boards and arts council because they're up and active and they're new.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And I said if they're doing a great job, that's great. Because I actually know that I did send an email to join the environmental board here a year ago, and I didn't get a reply from it, from whoever was running it, who asked to join, and I didn't get a reply from it. So I'm saying that all the reviews, all the boards, commissions, everybody should be reviewed. You've not skated over anybody.
I can throw in a question. I take objection to your comment that we let it slide. We are not letting anything slide. This is a crisis situation that we're in. We have two councils that are up and running. One made the arts council, one made the environmental council. We are not going to demoralize our dedicated residents right now who are volunteers by following due process. We're going to work on the other committees that actually have vacancies. Thank you.
And the plan right now is, we're working to put it online for, on the webpage, so everybody that wants to apply for a two-day chance, it'll be open to anyone and everywhere.
And that's how it should be for every, everybody. Whether they're working or not, it should be because surely these boards and commissions have a duration that could be three years, or two years, or a month.
Right, there's some of that said, look, we've all heard the stories about people who applied for the zoning board three times and never got an answer. That would fix it all that. That's what I'm saying. It's going to be online, so everybody can apply, and...
I know, I'm just like following up on what I heard at the working meeting last week. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have one to follow up. Laura, we have an answer to one of your questions.
Yeah, one of our assistant corporation councils, Rich Perios, has stepped up to be the acting city councilor of corporation council. And, well, he is not as experienced in zoning as Greg is. He does have experience in zoning. And also, our other assistant corporation council, Megan Conker, who's failed to do, also has some zoning experience. So they're going to work together at the zoning boards, and, you know, will be able to reach out to other experts if something comes up that's beyond their experience.
And that appointment is effective at 11:59 p.m. this evening.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Jim Carson.
Jim Carson, Long Beach. I'd like to start off by thanking President Bender for his extensive update on what's going on behind the scenes. It's nice to be kept in the loop. I learned purely by accident that earlier this week, actually, not by accident, I mean, I saw that there was no announcement on the city website about the Martin Luther King Day. And last year, we had, you know, made mention of it, and brought it to the attention of the community. And this year, it seems like it just sort of slipped by us. And so, you know, in view of that, there's probably other events that take place in the city on a regular basis. And it almost would seem like, since we have a PR department, they would have been on top of something like that and made sure that the city was well aware of what was going on and where it's going to be and where it would take place. But for some reason, it, you know, slipped by, and I would, you know, give the council an excuse because they're new on, you know, the job. But certainly, some of the other people have been here for a while. And besides that, it also was brought to my attention that there have been some rather notable people that have appeared here at town at one time or another. And I don't know if there's ever been any recognition of the fact. I mean, for one example, is Robert F. Kennedy, who actually gave a speech on the boardwalk. And, you know, he was, you know, pretty well-known at the time, and one of the Kennedy dynasty members. And being one of the only, you know, few people that have been assassinated, certainly, it was made note by a lot of people. And maybe we should have some sort of, you know, plaque or, you know, mention of that, you know, somewhere on the boardwalk. And same thing is true with... walk. And so, you know, it's not just to give them recognition, but to also make people aware of the fact that Long Beach was important enough in the lives of other people to make sure that they appeared here. And so, it would bring some sort of esteem to the city if people, if more people were aware of this, you know, going forward. And so, I don't know if the city has an event manager, or somebody that, you know, stays on top of these things, but, you know, I mean, the parade was obviously something that everybody was aware of, because you have to make, you know, accommodations for the people walking down the street, so they don't get run over. So, you know, obviously somewhere along the way, it kind of slipped by everybody, so hopefully next time around it won't, but, you know, there's Memorial Day coming up, and, you know, other events that probably will occur during the year that maybe we should make sure that people are aware of. Anyway, just wanted to make mention of that.
Just, James, just in terms of event planning, we actually have a very good event planning system that goes on, sampled by one of our people in our administration territory. Any kind of event like this that's run, it's an application is made to the event department, Long Beach events, they go through and they lay out all the requirements and who's responsible for what. That request for this this year came in late, okay, so the committee scrambled, got everything all organized. Last year, when the issue ran something up here, this time the people that were organizing it at the MLK Center decided to not have something back here, but have something at the MLK Center afterwards. But it came, the request came in like a week before, so until we get those requests, we'll carefully organize them. But Kerry and her department did a great job putting everything together to get it off the ground and go. I'll have to check why it didn't end up on the website.
Okay.
I also sent an email to info@lvmk.org last Tuesday regarding the program, the fundraiser, and the march, and never received a response.
All right, so there's some slip-ups on both things.
We can always do better.
We certainly can.
Thank you, just one quick question regarding what you were talking about, like other people, notable people, I can't, like Robert Kennedy, does the historical society have records and stuff like that?
I'm sure we have some information on, you know, on cloud somewhere. I mean, you know, we're in the process of going through and digitizing everything. We have a ton of information and trying to get the exact dates and times of people that have been here. It's amazing the numbers of very notable people that have visited Long Beach and have lived here.
We can talk offline about that. Okay. Okay. Jim Hanley.
Hello, good evening, I'm Jim Hanley, Long Beach resident, I love Long Beach, I love America, God bless America. Thank you for being up here and working to help us with this wonderful place where we live. I'm very excited to live in Long Beach. My grandson Noah James Hanley is fifth generation Long Beach. He and I go to the playground at Mother's X Center on a regular basis. It's a very serene street. It's just, it's a lovely place, so calm, it's, I don't know how to describe it, it's a place where you can be with him and just really enjoy nature. I, you know, there's so many important things that you guys are doing, this almost sounds trivial, but, you know, this Bayfront Arena, I'm opposed to it, I just don't understand the need for it. I'm wondering why restaurants owners want to open an arena here. What is the purpose? Is this special for these non-arenas? I know it's a very tricky business, I have some friends that have done this. But saying that, anybody's entitled to it, if the numbers of John and Bakken said, right, why would they be giving something like that? And then why would they put it right at the playground? Because that pavilion is used by the city of Long Beach. I couldn't imagine what, somebody who owns a restaurant would want to have a business there. There's plenty of room down by the boat launch track on the other side, but that doesn't make sense to me. I'm missing something. I'm being a little sarcastic when I say that. I hope that you people will at least postpone this or table it, or whatever the expression is, and research this somewhere. It came out of the blue, I received a letter from a neighbor yesterday about this. You know, how does this stuff happen? It's something that was proposed three or four years ago, and postponed, 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 and now all of a sudden here at the start of the new year, are you going to vote on this tonight? Is that what the outcome, okay, well, good, I'm glad to hear that. But, you know, how did things make this happen? Didn't just, was there a backroom deal with somebody who's not around? Well, the pricing certainly sounds like it's very favorable, if John and Bakken is correct, but he told you people, and I just want to let you know, I'm opposed to it, I love Long Beach, thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Ratch.
Good evening, my name is Brian Ratch, Sunset Bay Adventure. For each individual? I said, good evening, my name is Brian Ratch, Sunset Bay Adventure. I would like to see the city council have a vote on February 18th on the proposed arena. Actually, the Long Beach Comprehension Plan has called for such a project. You will see the paper, it says, actually, the Mattville Arena, which came out in 2016, Sunset, Sunset Adventure is even willing to downsize the project if the council feels the 34th arena is too big, and would consider downsizing it. We don't have an arena, we live on Barrier Island, we should have a arena, numerous other islands, numerous other places. The water taxi, we would consider doing a water taxi only. The water taxi will be running this summer, it'll be servicing communities like Island Park, Point Lookout, Freeport, Mary, et cetera. The water taxi would be a great addition to the Long Beach. I am sure the residents would make use of it. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we'd really like to get a vote on February 18th.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to say?
What do you want, what are you asking for on the arena?
I'm asking for a vote, I'm asking for it to come to the council, to come up with an answer, to say, hey, this is, is it accessible, not good, human, what else do we need to do? We have all law permits, and we're looking to move forward on this project.
Well, we asked, from the working meeting, we asked the staff to go back and get some additional information.
That's why I said February 18th, you know, my attorney will be out of town, until then he'll be back, the kids have a lot of time to move forward.
Well, we have to see what information this staff comes back with. Obviously, the public's going to want some input too, in the process, and you're asking for an answer, but we don't have the information yet to give you an answer.
We can't make an enforced decision without analysis from the staff. I'm sorry that the previous councils let you down and did not get those analyses done for the past four and a half years, but this council is going to evaluate all data and then make informed decisions. We will, we are hopeful that we can do it within your timeframe, but there will be no guarantees.
Okay, somebody around the corner.
Yeah. Thank you. Ann Pro. Ann Pro. Okay. Roy Lester.
Who? Roy Lester, Long Beach. You know, I did listen to Brian, I did listen to other people, you know, at some point, if you could give us a date for public hearing, not now, I know that takes a while.
Why can't you?
I'm sorry, you know, there were a couple of things went up at the work session, and I know you don't have a date yet, but if you could give us a little advance notice of that date, rather than just the week, you know, the meeting, it would be appreciated. And also on any projects, of course, you have to do quite a bit of studying, I mean, not do, but we do too, so the more information we get, you know, part of the problem with the work session was the public couldn't see any of the material, was not given any of the material, and, you know, and Brian's been nice enough now to put up a website that gives us a lot of information, but the more we can get, the better. As far as the, I mean, I know you've been listening tonight, and the county responses are great, but, I think you guys said, oh, you guys did, you know.
It's nice to get answers.
Yeah, but as far as the board of ethics go, that's all so defined in the charter, you know, under the ethics, like the code of ethics, that, you know, I just would like to see you move quicker on these things. The work session, by the way, you know, I know, I heard that there were notices all over, I was looking for it that day, and I couldn't find it, and I'm sure that it was there somewhere, but what we did in the school board was, we had a dam going across the entire website the day before a meeting, so that people couldn't miss it, and I'm not the only one that, a lot of people didn't know about it, and, you know. Just like I was just saying, I wish I could have known, gotten the word out myself, not that I didn't know, but I assumed that it was out there, sorry. Yeah, the others being, it's freaking freezing in here.
It is.
It is freaking freezing, it is so cold. I, I, I.
Your side, it's commanding officer, he's got a t-shirt on.
Yeah, they're carrying him away.
Trying to save money.
Oh, okay, all right, that makes, okay. And finally, I know I spoke to Mr. Delory, who is on Super Bowl Sunday, where sometimes gives out hot chocolate. Now, in order to do that, we tried it a couple of years ago with a propane burn, and it was a disaster. We did get hot water, but it just didn't work, it takes forever. And so, we're trying to see if there's some way we can get arrangement to have electricity so we can have loads of electric coffee pumps for that. We're just, what we're trying to do is basically give an alternative to the alcohol down there.
Hang on one second.
Yeah, I have followed that to each major to see about how, and then the events committee, this isn't really run by the city, this is run by Make-A-Wish.
Yeah.
And we always get, they always get all kinds of vendors that want to sign up and have different booths, so to get that.
This is free, this is not.
It might be free, but it has to be approved through Make-A-Wish, so if you, we put your request into Kerry Troy, she's looking at it, and she'll get back to you as to whether that's possible. She works with the Make-A-Wish people.
Well, Make-A-Wish, I can speak directly to them, that's not a, it's the city that would be the roadblock, so.
If the city's not a roadblock, if Make-A-Wish says that you can have a booth up there, we'll catch you.
No, it would be on the beach. That's how we give away the hot chocolate, the people who drink are on the beach.
I think you have to maybe reach directly out the territory to practice.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Lester, thank you, and follow up with me, please, about where we are with that situation with hot chocolate on the beach. Thank you.
Hey, Catherine O'Leary.
I'm Catherine O'Leary, Long Beach. First of all, I'd like to wish great success and luck, and this is my first time in front of the groups of council members, and it's very nice to see you.
Thank you, happy to be here, thank you.
The reason I'm speaking is concerns the North Park overlay district. I got a real alarmed when this little one major was being about the language in it, and the language that alarmed me spoke about removing deteriorating houses, light, and marginal structures. The, okay, in these two-family houses, the more expensive part will be given to people of a family of four that meets the Nassau Suffolk medium income. For a family of four, that's 124,000, which is pretty high, okay? You know, there are people living in homes there that are in disrepair, and I think that the part that's missing from the plan is a project component to allow people to rehab the houses that they're already in. And there's another service called the Community Development Corporation, they tend to stabilize neighborhoods, they will do work on your house, and you incur a debt, but if you renovate a house for five years, they forgive the debt. So I know this is politically incorrect, but in the 60s, they used to call urban renewal, de-gro renewal, okay? And I see the possibility for that here, and I see the words here, the adjectives point to eminent domain, which has been used twice or three times before in North Park. So, you know, for me, it's, it seems to me there's no part in this plan to keep people that would say are a family of four making 70,000 in their homes by fixing their homes, and it's really not fair for somebody else, another family of four, making 124,000 into their homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually know, I actually know that we tabled, we tabled that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that we did.
Okay.
And also, what is the source of your sheet?
The numbers?
No, the actual, I just want to make sure I know what sheet you're using, what from the city or.
This is from the city.
From the, yeah.
And then someone's.
Just want to make sure that the information that you had required, you came from, you know, thank you.
Sam, going once, going twice, I don't see Sam. Okay, I passed, I passed, I passed. Okay. Mr. Dussler.
Hi, your name is Jay Russell, Long Beach. I just wanted to say, it's been 210 days since the primary, 72 days since Election Day, 21 days since your inauguration. Spices passage of all of this time, nothing of any substance has happened to change city government. There's simply no acceptable explanation for the lack of any changes to city management. Your assertion that you are somebody who is doing your due diligence is equally unacceptable, and this is because the council, in conducting its due diligence, is at the mercy of Mr. Morando, the furnishing information relied upon by the council, in carrying out that duty. Mr. Morando has a history of being avoidant to the council's directives and acting towards the council's objectives. I think the council was going about this all backwards. You're trying to enact changes with all these boards and commissions and all these other things, great ideas of all, but you're doing it in the wrong order. When a sports team decides it wants to go in a new direction, the first thing they do is fire the coach. I don't really, I'm not, obviously it doesn't matter what I think, but I don't care whether you guys roll back to being P W commissioner or fire them altogether, the bottom line is, Mr. Morando is an impediment to this council of making this city, putting this city on a bad track, and I think he's having a go.
Thank you, Jay. I would have been the council on the subject of the work for the last four weeks. Have I stopped from giving you any information? Have I tried to help? Have I, you know, can I include a team? Have you even said to you, if you think that I'm not the right city manager, for the good of the city, you should go out and get another city manager that you're all comfortable with? I think I've tried my best to do everything. No, but this man is attacking me. Jay has.
I don't care whether you guys roll them back to be E P W commissioner or fire them altogether, the bottom line is this, uh, Mr. Morando is an impediment to this council, uh, making this city, putting this city on the back track and I think he's gotta go.
Thank you, Jay, I would have sent the council on such a work ethic for the last four weeks. Have I stopped from giving you any information? Have I tried to help? Have I, you know, done anything to improve the team? Have even said to you, if you think that I'm not the right city manager, for the good of the city, you should go out and get another city manager that you're all comfortable with? I think I've tried my best to do everything. No, but this man is attacking me, because Jay has a personal issue with me and he's done this to other people up here and he lets, he lets the facts get in the way, he deseciously goes after people.
I can say, I can say personally, everything I requested, um, from Mr. Morando, I perceive, um, and everything I requested from the controller in the resident, I've received, so, and Mr. Fraser, I'm not requesting a lot, but everything so far that I've asked for, sometimes it's educational on my part, um, I've received.
With all due respect, I, I don't think that you can accept, uh, discrediting of any information provided to you by Mr. Morando, he's not on your side.
Well, I'm not, Mr. Dussel, I disagree with your statement, I'm just clarifying from my perspective, for what I've asked for, um, I perceive, I've received it, I'm, I'm focusing it on audit, doing what the state controllers ask you, that's what I'm focusing it on, better internal management, I'm, I'm speaking only for my portion of my little role here in the city council. I don't know if others want to make comment, but that's my thoughts.
All right, Liz Mike and I have been officially on the job for twenty-one days, so we have not conducted business with Mr. Morando prior to this, so it's only been three weeks that we have had a working relationship and we are still figuring that out. So it would be, it would be reckless for us to make any, any decisions at this time based on personalities and people that don't like each other. The idea is that people can disagree, people do not have to like each other, but we all have the same, same goal and that is to serve the residents of Long Beach and we are going to disagree sometimes and, and, and that's the way it's gonna be.
I'm simply saying that Mr. Morando has an established history of being untrustworthy and I don't know how the council can receive within the position that he's.
I think we, we appreciate.
What you're continuing to say about me, because I will get an attorney to sue you believably, I've got a forty-year reputation, might just work with the villagers, I'll go to any other employer that's ever had me and have never done anything but honest and they know that.
We, everyone's entitled, everyone's.
And you know that too, stop making things up.
Everyone is entitled to their opinion here, we are all entitled to our opinion, but we are all going to work together whether we like each other or not, because it's everything in Long Beach and it's gonna be on our timeline, not yours.
Very good. And with that, thanks for coming, folks, that ends our meeting.